So it's not too fast?
No.
Where'd you put it in Plymouth?
Smith-Bridge, you're putting it in the senior center.
Yeah, done with senior center.
On the way to New Hampton.
Yeah.
Five hours.
No, not that long. Maybe like three hours or so.
If you got up that scale, they're pretty quick.
We were with a couple of families, so we pulled over to the side.
I'll think of doing this.
We weren't in any hurry.
My husband's coming in today with my son. He just went out.
Great day to be in the water, I mean, great week to be in the water.
How are you?
Ah.
I'm doing well.
Thank you. I know, great. Did she survive that?
I started construction on the Asian restaurant.
I did say something to you. Yeah, I saw that. Finally.
Yeah. Being the poor guy out on the side, he's like beside himself. It's just great. And his fault, I mean, just the state. Does he not stay onto their drive?
They don't want it. Not as old as it is.
They don't say anything.
The ones you see, you can hear it.
Well, really, I think.
It's the road. Fifteen yards down the road.
John, does your watch tend to run a little fast? Does your watch tend to run a little fast?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, well, that sounds about right then. That way I'm never running. Unless you're always thinking, oh, that's four minutes.
Yeah, but no, we're not going to mention the River Rock.
Sure. Could I have your attention, please? It's 6:30. I'm going to call to order the August 20th meeting for the Town of Plymouth Planning Board. My name is John Kruegerberg, and I'm the chair. Going to take the roll call of members present. We have myself, Vice Chair John Ranlet, Mike Ahern, Bert Sutcliffe, Ron De Bishop, John Kelly, the Selectmen's representative, Paul Wilson, Bob Dragon, who's an alternate, Jack Scarborough, who's an alternate, and absent is the Selectmen's alternate, Bush Kuching. Bush Kuching. Since we have a full board, there's no need to appoint an alternate as a voting member, but of course, as members of the board, you are welcome to provide input and ask questions and help us come to our decisions. You just cannot make motions or second them or vote on them. Moving on to our agenda item number three, we have time for public comments. If anybody in the audience would like to speak to any item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to do so now. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move on to our item number four, which is the administrative matters. And all that we have there is the review of our August 6 minutes, which I believe were emailed and mailed to people ahead of time, so they could find any typos or corrections they wanted to make. And so maybe we can move through this fairly quickly. Does anybody have any items they'd like to address in the draft minutes? Mr. Scarborough?
Mr. Chair, on the second page, in the Pema-Juwaset River Local Advisory Committee report, I would like to correct the acronym P-R-L-A-S to P-R-L-A-C, which is Pema-Juwaset River Local Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
As opposed to society or whatever else.
Yes, Ms. Bishop.
On page one, it, members present, we've got listed Bush Kuching III as being attendance. And on page three, on the very last bullet, I think it's supposed to be Compton, not Compton. And on page five, there was a discussion after Miriam had indicated the rails for trails, Mike had mentioned something that the property along the rails, if they don't use it anymore, goes back to the property owner. And that was never.
About which bullet would you put that in?
I would say it should go probably after the third bullet. I mean, the second bullet. It should be the third.
Okay.
Actually, that is what Mr. Ahern said, however, it depends, I mean, it's, so I don't know if we really should, I mean, I can add it if we want to add it, but they're doing the exact same thing in Laconia with the railroads, and they are creating it into a trail. So it's not point-blank illegal or anything improper. Rails to trails does still exist, and you can still convert railroad lines to trails and/or you can use railroad right-of-way even on an active railroad, because in Laconia there's an active railroad, and they're going to use the right-of-way alongside it. So it was just a matter of putting in something that's not the whole.
So maybe on the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, we could do a semicolon, make Mike Ahern voice his concerns regarding safety for the users, most notably children of the path, semicolon, as well as possible issues of right-of-way.
Sure, that's fine.
Acceptable to you, Mr. Ahern?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bishop?
All right.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I have some others. Back on page three, under new business, it talks about the Pema-Juwaset River, covers a lot of area. I believe that should be, Pema-Juwaset River watershed covers a lot of area.
And are you on a particular bullet again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's second bullet, under new business.
So watershed after river.
Hmm?
You're inserting watershed after river.
Correct.
I agree.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, on the fifth bullet, the Corps of Engineers, it's C-O-R-P-S, not, and further about that, that's a typo, but also in that bullet, it says here mitigation of a wetland impact doesn't make sense, when mitigation of a wetland impact doesn't make sense, because it is on a small level. I think the point was really that if mitigation wasn't possible in the immediate area, that it would be done in another area. So I don't think that really captures it by concluding the sentence in that way.
Well, how about we just cross out some words?
Yeah, that's a better, right, to just cross out, doesn't, well, because it is on a small level, can certainly be eliminated.
When mitigation of wetland impact is not possible in a single area.
Right, something like that, rather than doesn't make sense.
Sure. Okay, I'll do that.
Isn't possible.
When mitigation of wetland impact is not possible in a single area, period.
On page four, about a third of the way up from the bottom of the page, it says, "Further discussion ensued regarding the NCC's offer to help Plymouth." And the wording there is also not clear. It says, "To help Plymouth update their hazardous prevention plan." I don't think anybody is asserting that our prevention plan is hazardous. I think there's another adjective that's.
It's a hazardous mitigation plan. I'll change it to mitigation. Hazard, maybe it's called hazard mitigation.
Right. And that's all I have.
Last chance for anybody else. If anything pops out later on in the week and you want to revisit these minutes at a later meeting, you are entitled to do that. But for now, I'll see if there's a vote to accept the minutes as they've been amended.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
As moved by Mr. Ranlet and seconded by Mr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion of the minutes? All in favor of approving these minutes as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Our next item looks blank, correspondence. Is there anything for that town planner?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Significant.
So moving on to item number six, there are three items under new business, two of them being minor lot line adjustments and the other one being a transportation enhancement grant proposal. So we'll take the transportation enhancement grant proposal first, as it's listed on the agenda.
Right.
And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to just point out for everybody on the board and the audience, a reminder of the process and the procedure involved with this. So, and then I'll ask you to introduce the actual item. In terms of process, in terms of, it's the powers of the select board to make decisions as to what happens with respect to transportation issues and expending money to improve anything like that. But often, the select board asks for the planning board's input. And so our role tonight is to listen to the public comment as we can in terms of having a public hearing and to discuss this item ourselves, and then to make a recommendation to the select board for them to consider. And, but they're the people that make the decision as to whether the town moves forward with the, a transportation enhancement and how that might be paid for. But we're going to discuss that, because we've been asked to gauge the community support for this and to sort of serve as a bellwether for that. So that's the process. Our procedure will be that I'll ask the town planner to introduce this item to us briefly. We, as a board, can ask clarifying questions, and then I'll open up a public hearing, so that the, anyone in the audience may speak to it. Then when we close the public meeting, we'll return it to the board for further discussion and see what kind of action the board wants to take. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? So moving forward then, if the town planner would please introduce this item to us.
Right, I'm just going to go over the history, and then I'll go over to the drawing and point that out, what I'm talking about, so we can all have an idea of it. An engineering firm, S.E.A. Consultants, was hired by the town to identify key infrastructure improvements needed in the downtown, and they were concentrating on South Main Street, Depot Street, and Green Street. And their charge was to make downtown safer and work more effectively and efficiently. And this study was completed in April 2006. The study identified Highland Street Extension, this is the street that connects Anderson's Bakery to the Senior Center, as one of the streets that needs safety and drainage improvements. So specifically, we're talking about adding sidewalks, adding crosswalks, and reworking stormwater catch basins, so that they would function properly. We went down there one time when it was really rainy, and we could see that some of the catch basins were totally dry, bone dry, so obviously, it wasn't working, and the others were very full, so, you know, it's no point to have a catch basin if it's not going to work. But you can adjust it, so it will work. An agreement with the butters to do these improvements was signed in May, June of 2005. Notice letters were sent to all abutting property owners notifying them of today's public hearing. The planner has personally talked to Steve Rand of Rand Hardware Store, the owner of Anderson's Bakery, and representatives from the Senior Center. These key stakeholders are not opposed to applying for the grant, but would like to be consulted when the project details are being determined. At this point, we're just talking about a concept. That's all we need for the grant, to show a concept. At that point, if we were blessed with getting the grant, then we could send out bids, the engineers would work out a detailed proposal in consultation with all the butters, anyone joining the property. TE, Transportation Enhancement money has recently become available to towns statewide. This grant hasn't been available since 2004, so it's been a break of five years. It's a reimbursement grant where the state will reimburse 80% of the cost of the improvements, and that would mean that the state would give, for this project, give $200,000 to the town. 20% of the cost, the town is responsible for, and it already exists in the current Highway Department's budget. That's $50,000. So the estimated total cost of the project is $250,000. The highway manager, Peter Firmanek, supports this grant application. He helped conceive of the project. We walked it out together with the town engineer, and he has agreed to maintain the project within his current budget. The grant is due September 15, 2009. The proposal is to use the TE money to make this section of downtown, and as I'll point it out in the drawing, safer, more efficient, and more effective. The purpose of the public hearing is to determine if we have public support of this project. Another public hearing on this grant proposal scheduled for Monday, August 24, this Monday, 6:30, to be heard before the Board of Selectmen. After today's public hearing, the Planning Board may make a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to either support or not support going forward with the TE grant application. And now, I'm just going to step over here and show you. So again, we looked at the whole downtown, the engineering, we assessed the whole downtown, and then I looked at our budget and saw what could we actually afford to do and what was most important. So how can we get the most bang for the money that we have? Most needed and affordable. And that's what came up here with this Highland Street Extension. It doesn't have a street sign on it, so not a lot of people know what the name of this is, but this is Highland Street here. This is Anderson's Bakery. This is the Senior Center. This is where the brand-new Rotary Club Amphitheater is, and this is the public boat ramp. So this is Green Street, and this is Rand's Hardware. So Anderson's Rand Hardware, so if everyone can figure what that is. And there's parking here, so you see a lot of people, and there's parking here, walking here. Now with the new amphitheater, there's even more people, you know, walking down here, and there's the Senior Center here. Also, there's the train that operates in the summer, and there's public transportation for the seniors over here, too. So this is a very heavily trafficked area in terms of people walking and then cars, but we want to make it safer for the people that are walking here. What we're talking about is right here at the courthouse, the sidewalk just point ends. So the green and the orange shows where we're talking about extending the existing sidewalk. Where it just abruptly ends, bring it right here from the amphitheater over here to the front of the Senior Center. Adding a crosswalk here, sorry, adding a crossing here with the train tracks, adding a crossing here from the Senior Center. And then when the Senior Centers go here, instead of it just being a paved road, can have a sidewalk, so it'll be safer for them. We're talking about maybe putting a little bit of landscaping along here, so maybe some trees here. We talked with Mr. Rand, and he does snow removal, and he needs to store his snow over here, so he was thinking it might be a better idea to put planters here. So we'll work on those details later, but that's why we put planters here. But the main idea was to have some kind of island for people that are walking, then they have a place to stand when they go over here, because this is where traffic's coming in, a truck that comes in here to the parking lot, coming in and out. And then continue the sidewalk up here along this building, and then having what's called a bump out. Right now, it's just striped with paint, but having this as a, as a physical surface, a hardscape, so that people can stand on it and be safe, and lessen their crosswalk distance when they cross over. Having a bump out over here, and then a main street in front of the junkyard dogs, there's already sidewalk. But we're talking about extending it here, because the sidewalk starts to narrow, 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 and it also bumps out, so we want to realign the sidewalk and have it the same width as what we have over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So does anybody on the board have any clarifying questions for the planner at this moment? We'll also have the opportunity to ask the planner other questions after the public hearing, too, of course. I've got one clarifying question. When you talked about the crosswalk over the railroad tracks, is that, that's going to be done by the state or the railroad, or what's going to happen there?
Originally, the railroad was going to help us do that, but they don't have any money, so they would prefer, if we could use Transportation Enhancement Grant money to do that, it would get done a lot sooner, and they will fully support us doing that work.
And is that crosswalk considered, I mean, that railroad crossing considered unsafe or just below standards right now?
That was my understanding, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Would that increase the cost?
Yeah, we will have to look at that. I did talk to the engineer, and he put crosswalks in, but not the part about the crossing over the railroad tracks. So we have to look at the numbers and see if it's all going to work.
And one other question is, the retaining wall on the building next to, across the road from the bakery, that has to be brought back, right?
Yeah, that was, that's in our proposal. It looks like a couple feet. I can give you exact measurement, but it looks like a couple feet to bring it over.
Yes, Mr. Dragon?
I'd like to ask Miriam about, it is a reimbursement grant where the state will reimburse 80% of the cost of the improvements?
Correct.
What are the mandates going to be from the state?
I'm sorry, I'm.
Mandates, when they give us a loan, chance, all, everything I hear is past the, we get from the state, our tax money back, they give us mandates from the state of what we can do and what we can't do for the town.
My understanding is that we submit the grant, we show them exactly what we're going to be doing, and then we ask them what we're going to, where we're requesting our reimbursement. For example, we would request reimbursement on sidewalk extension, sidewalk extension, and then they will reimburse us for that. So as long as we stick to what we said we were asking for reimbursement.
Just for construction and, and the belt.
The construction, yeah, there's, there's right-of-way improvement, there's engineering services, they have it all broken down, what are acceptable costs and what aren't acceptable costs. So we would get that pre-approved as part of the grant.
But the state makes no other obligations against the town that we have to comply with in order to get this funding. Sometimes they say we have to do something else if we do this.
I see what you're saying, okay. Of course, it would have to meet any kind of, you know, if there are other state requirements, for example, like ADA accessible, then we would meet those requirements, but, but no, there's no other string attached, except maintenance, you know, but I have talked to the highway director of that, and he is going to maintain it with his existing budget, because he's already clearing snow on those paths anyhow. So, so he said that wouldn't impact his budget at all.
Thank you.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Two questions. The sidewalk that's widening, that's just pushing away from the road into the embankment to widen that sidewalk? The road itself isn't being widened as part of that on South Main Street, I'm sorry.
Right, on South Main Street, that's existing right-of-way.
But the, the physical construction is just the sidewalk moves into the embankment to the right as you were going south? The roadbed and curb are staying put?
Correct, that's correct.
And I guess one other thing, at the same time, the, I see an agreement with the butters to do these improvements was signed in 2005?
Right.
That was for all of this and all of the butters affected?
Correct, I mean, this was for going on Highland Street Extension. Of course, we would do a new agreement, but this is.
Oh, I'm just curious, I didn't see that in our last discussion of this, so.
Right, right, no, I found that out later.
Huh.
Mr. Scarborough, and then Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I'd like to ask Miriam, I noticed that the improvements are primarily on the western side of Main Street, and I've been approached by constituents who have expressed a desire to have something done to improve the pedestrian capabilities of the opposite side, and wondered if any of those had been considered, particularly down around Cumberland, not to advertise, but.
Are we talking about on South Main Street?
South Main Street, yeah.
Okay.
And, and I, I know that's down the road, but.
What we were discussing with putting sidewalks on Main Street more than just that area, that really there's a bump out and there's a significant discrepancy, is the state has a project that they're going to redo, Highway 3, and they're going to do drainage improvements. So when they do drainage improvements, they're going to be tearing up the road, so we didn't want to put a sidewalk in, and then the state would come back and tear it all up.
Tear it up, right, right.
So we're going to wait until the state finishes their improvements.
Okay, just future think.
Yeah, we know that, that South Main needs sidewalks, but we thought we'll just do something that we won't get torn up.
Mr. Kelly?
Two things. Is that drain on Ryan's property or is it on the town's property?
Are we talking about the drain behind his store or the one that's on Highland Street Extension?
The one you're talking about.
Okay, on Highland Street Extension? No, it's, well, the very southern tip of Highland Street Extension crosses over Mr. Rand's property, but no, the drainage is on the town right-of-way.
Okay, and, and in that South Main Street enhancement on the drainage and so forth, I understood that the state didn't have money for at least 10 years.
Right. What I was told with this transportation enhancement was, it just appeared all of a sudden, so we didn't have a long lead-up on it.
Mr. Ahern?
I wanted to ask Miriam, what part of the railroad tracks to Anderson's is going to be a raised sidewalk, or is it just going to be lines?
From Anderson's to the train tracks?
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's going to be a sidewalk.
Raised?
Yes.
Okay. How are you going to get trucks into Ryan's and?
Okay, so this part here is raised, this is raised here, then this is the opening to Rand's parking lot, so that's open. And there's a little bit of a sidewalk here, there's a raised island here that will have a, it's going to, it's not going to come up straight like this and curve, it's going to be slanted, sort of curved, so that he can store snow here, somewhere in the form. It'll be slanted up, opening here for the cars, and then sidewalk here, and then this is flat crosswalk, and then the sidewalk.
Thank you. Are there any other clarifying questions for the town planner? Oh, yes, Mr. Ranlet?
Miriam, the catch basins that they're going to be working on, where are they located? I didn't see anything on the plan.
Sorry, yeah, we should have put catch basins in there, too. I could highlight it. There's one here, there's one. There's one over here, too. There is, this, too. Okay. So it's, I guess it's, it's over here, I don't see it, but, but there's, there's two here, and I think this is the one that's always dry, and this one's wet. So there's three, three or four.
Okay, and that's all included in the figures we already have?
Right, that's included.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on that subject, so will that, the road that we're calling extension, will that actually all be torn up so as to improve the flow into those catch basins?
No, as far as I know, you just do modifications, like, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but no, it's not all torn up.
But the plan is basically to keep the asphalt that's there, there?
Correct, that's, that's my understanding.
Any other questions? Then I'll move us to a public hearing, and I'll remind the audience that if you would please identify yourself before you speak, that would be helpful. And even more helpful is if you have not already signed in on a piece of paper by the front door, we can get the correct spelling of your name for our minutes. So it's 6:58, and I'm opening the public meeting. If there's anybody here who would like to speak against this proposal, I'd like them to identify themselves and speak now. I'll let people of a neutral nature speak in a moment. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this proposal, would you please raise your hand, so I can identify you? Yes?
I'm Bill Hoad, President of Comma. If I may be able to indulge the chair here, I've been involved with this. If I may be able to indulge the chair here, I've been involved with this condition on this stretch of roadway going back to 2004. And there is a plan that is in the planner's office, it's in the highway department office, that showed a concept for making improvements very close to what is now shown on the board that we have in front of us. At that time, we worked with the select board of the time, who was wholly supportive of the concept that were developed within the municipal safety committee. And from there, it was coordinated with the New Hampshire DOT Rail Division. It was coordinated with all of the abutters of the property to that roadway. And it was at that time when plans and agreements were developing that the abutters signed on to the scope of the improvements that were being proposed at that time. Why did this get started when it did? The municipal safety committee had great concern about the increased traffic volume that we were gonna see coming off Highland Street, going down to Green Street to the new bridge. And conversely, traffic coming off the bridge, treading on the Green Street, coming up to Main Street to avoid the congestion in the downtown area. I don't have to tell you that if you're at all familiar with the traffic patterns since the bridge has been built, that concern was wholly justified, and if you were to take traffic counts now versus what they were back in '03, '04, before the bridge was completed, you'd find that there was a marked increase in the volume of traffic. One of the big concerns with that expected increase in traffic was the condition of the rail crossing that existed at the foot of the hill. It was, at that time, deteriorated to significant extent. And we were trying to get the rail division of DOT to accelerate some money to be used in conjunction with the town to make improvements to the condition of that crossing. There were other improvements that were seen to be required as well, and that included lane delineation for the vehicles themselves going east or west on that connector. We felt that the pavement width down at the base of the hill had to be widened from what it was. We saw the need to correct the drainage problem that was at the foot of the hill. And we also saw the need to put a striped walkway to delineate where pedestrians should walk in relation to the traffic flow itself. We also were recommending at that time the installation of a stop sign, not only at the base of the hill, but on Green Street as you approach that rail crossing, so that traffic would be slowed down and would help to remediate some of the deterioration that was continuing in that period of time due to the speed of traffic making the turn and going off pavement and breaking the edge of pavement. The board, after we've got the understandings and agreements in place, did authorize the town highway department to strike the roadway, and there is a yellow stripe down the middle of the roadway delineating the lanes. They did authorize the installation of a catch basin on the north side of that roadway at the foot of the hill just before the railroad track in order to capture water and eliminate siltation that was migrating down the hill and erode with the road, with eroded materials and were falling on the tracks. The railroad didn't want to see that condition allowed to continue, the erosion was severe, and it was causing train movement problems at the foot of the hill. There were three other catch basins down in that area that were also identified as being dysfunctional. The one across the street to which the new one was connected, one on the Green Street west side, just south of the connecting roadway, and another one further down on Green Street by the senior center that was also not functioned properly. And water was pooling in that area at the entrance to the senior center where people had to walk around these puddles or avoid ice in the winter that formed in order to get inside. And those catch basins were also planned to be corrected so that they would proceed and function as they should. The bottom line, we saw the need for the improvement long ago, the select board embraced it at that time. DOT couldn't come up with the money to assist the town in doing what it was seeking to do because that's when the department began to realize in general that there was a tremendous shortfall in their capital plan, used to be what was already committed to. This improvement with TE money is a windfall for this town. And to allay the questions about TE money, it's not state money, it's federal money. And the TE funding that has been reinstituted is really part of the stimulus plan that the federal government has put in place. And they're making that funding available to local communities who have project needs that fit within the criterion for TE funding on an accelerated basis. I frankly don't know whether it will be available as early as Maryam is maybe thinking it might be. Traditionally, if you submitted a TE enhancement application today for consideration and it were approved in the usual cycle, which would be in the September, October time period, the money would not be available until the ensuing fiscal year of the federal government, which would be a year away from when it was approved.
Yeah.
The stimulus, I think, is accelerating that process, but I'm not sure of the details, so that's for-
Yeah, I'm-
-to figure it out.
Okay.
The TE funding back in 2004 dried up, as Maryam pointed out. We had been eyeing that money as a possible source to deal with this crossing even at that time, but when it dried up, that source went away as well. So I think this is a well-identified need, there is ample justification for it in terms of increased traffic, vehicles and pedestrians, and if we can use this TE money to a successful application, the town will benefit a great deal from it.
Thank you very much. The person in the dark blue shirt have your hand up?
I was neutral, but yeah.
You're neutral? All right, the non-neutral person in the second row, please, if you could identify yourself, please.
I am Scott King from Holdenis. I'm here as a capacity as president of the Plymouth Rotary Club. I'm a non-resident, do I need permission to speak or?
You may speak.
Thank you very much. Last night, we had a concert at the amphitheater. And there were, a quick head count, two hundred and fifty-five people there. Many of them cut diagonal from the senior center across to the amphitheater, across to, there's no sidewalk right now between the parking and the amphitheater. It's, it's quite a large distance there, could easily handle a sidewalk, and there's also a, a flat spot right in Green Street there where water, water does puddle up. And I noticed this plan does address that, and we certainly would be in favor of that. The club was, is on record as voting to, we would like to see these improvements. The amphitheater was built by the Rotarians at no cost to the taxpayer of Plymouth. If this was, if this was put out for bid, I'm sure that amphitheater would be, be a quarter of a million dollar project. So any improvement you could do on the sidewalk would be greatly appreciated.
All right.
And this Saturday, we are having a duck stampede, hence the hat in front of Mike with the duck. It's eleven to two o'clock, we'd like your support. Since 1951, when Sam Hall started the penny sale, we have given thousands to scholarships, that's our big, a big, a big draw through the years. We appreciate the support the town's given us.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this project? Yes, in the back, please.
Frank Miller, I would like, I'm speaking in favor because this project would put the finishing touches to the Green Street program that we started back in 1995. There were nine projects slated for that street. We've completed six of them, the amphitheater being six, one which is the start of our riverfront park. And it comes to the end of the intersections, and the sidewalk is the last issue and the crossing of the railroad. That railroad crossing will be constructed to the width of thirty-five or forty feet, which would be, include the sidewalk area. And the, the sidewalk or the crossing itself is the most expensive part of this project because it has to, it's similar to the one at, right across from the bridge, it has to be able to support the weight of trucks and so on. And so they have to take up the old ties, put down concrete and so forth. There is minor construction at the end of Rand's storage facility to take the slope out. We have a grade on this street, but it also has a slope, and obviously they're gonna be re-manufacturing that so the water would flow down to the north side of this extension. And then that new catch basin would catch the silt and the water coming off of Chase Street and connect into that one catch basin that's in the middle of the street that's, doesn't get any water. So if there's any reconstruction of that street, that's, it's just a minor area where the sidewalk could be located. But this would be, finish it up, the whole projects that we've worked on for the last fifteen years. And I think it definitely would be a benefit to the town.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this project? Would anybody like to speak of a neutral nature of this project? Yes, sir, in the blue, please, if you could identify yourself.
I'm Steve Carpenter, I own Timmy Glass Company, which is basically opposite Anderson's Bakery. I've been there for thirty years and I've seen the traffic increase and the foot traffic increase, and I agree, we do need to do something about a sidewalk down through there. My question is, are you talking about moving that retaining wall on the right-hand side coming down the hill off Main Street?
Yeah, that is the proposal.
The whole length of it or just from the corner down?
We're just doing a concept right now, so we don't have the engineering details, that we would send out to bid and we would work with you on that. So there is, we did talk about the retaining wall and moving it, but I can't give you details on it.
Because if it gets moved at all down on the lower end, that might basically lose two parking spots by that being moved. But if it was gonna stay at the remaining location at the bottom end and cut it back, going up the hill towards Main Street, just to widen the entrance of it,
Right.
it would be an issue, but the lower end, I can't really afford to, you know, I would basically lose two parking spots if that was cut back down there.
Right, right, so, you know, when we get to the part where we pick out an engineering firm and we get to the details, then we'll meet with you and we'll try to come up with something.
I am in favor of the sidewalk because definitely suck the phone on down there.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, Mr. Hall?
To that, excuse me, to that concern, when we were looking at the roadway back in 2004, we looked at that wall system as well, and we, at that time, chose not to relocate it. It wasn't so much at the wall itself, up at the west end, couldn't be bumped over, but there were utilities there that had to be moved. And that was a costly proposition. And when we finally measured everything out and laid it out on the ground, we felt we didn't have to take that step. But if you're prepared to do that, I think it's only the western end of that wall that might have to be moved over a couple of three feet to get the improvement that you're seeking. One other comment I would make, if I may, with regard to the plan. You're talking about bump outs, and from what I gathered was said here earlier, they're gonna be elevated above road grade so that they're what you call an island of safety for pedestrians. When SEA did their study of South Main Street and that area in general, they had proposed a number of bump outs elsewhere in their study. Those bump outs were eliminated before the study was finally completed. And the reason being that snow removal was the big issue. They create obstacles to snow blades and snow removal operations. And there go, where you do have bump outs, they're flat with the pavement surface, but of a different textured material. And that's the way it's been carried out through town up to this point in time and the improvements that have been made. And I would question the appropriateness of that in this plan.
Thank you. Last chance for anybody else to speak to this item from the audience. It's seven fifteen, now closed, excuse me, close the public meeting and return conversation to the board. Mr. Kelly?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The cost is gonna be $250,000, and supposedly the stimulus money is gonna pay $200,000 and the town pays 50. I'd just like to let the people know that the state has already taken $500,000 away from the town because of sharing plans of the meals and rooms tax. So now the cost of the town is gonna be $550,000. So at this time, I really don't know whether it would be appropriate to spend another $50,000. You know, I have a question in regards to the drainage in the, and I know on Merrill Street, they require a fifteen-inch pipe going out of, you know, going down the street to the drainage now, is that going to, are they gonna use fifteen-inch pipes going into those drainage basins? Because that's, if you put just a six-inch pipe, which they probably have got now,
Right.
it's like, you know, painting an old guy.
Right. Now, I mean, my understanding, I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is we use the existing pipes, it was just reworking the stormwater drains, the catch basin, so that it flows in. So just shaving pavement, I don't, I don't think they were talking about putting in new pipes, but, I mean, it's possible I'm wrong.
But you see, all of this-
I just know the catch basins weren't working right and he's talking about reworking-
All of these things increase the cost of it.
Yeah, well, that's all included in the $250,000.
The fifteen-inch pipes, eh?
Well, I mean, I don't have any specs on that, so. That all has to be sent out to engineers and then, you know, we'll do a request for proposal and then they'll come in with their proposals.
Everybody's welcome to ask the town planner more clarifying questions and to make important statements about where this project fits in the scope of the town. But we do wanna move forward in the sense of making a recommendation to the board, the select board, whether we as a planning board think that this is a good project that should move forward or that we do not believe that and that we, so we're not supporting it. So we need to move our conversation in that, one of those two directions, or both directions, but we'll have to vote on one affirmatively and the other negatively. Yes, Mr. Ahern?
I have one comment, just kinda rehash just real quick what I mentioned last time. It's a quarter of a, a quarter of a million dollars- It's a quarter of a million dollars for that improvement. And Mr. King mentioned that, you know, there's some parking by the senior center to get to the amphitheater. It'd be nice for the town to do some sidewalk like that in the future. I'm just concerned about the money and Mr. Hool mentioned that there, there might be some utilities behind that wall. And if the price goes up more than what we asked for the grant, who would we be stuck paying the extra money? And if we're already going to have less money to work with, then I'd be real concerned about the town spending $50,000 on this. But I would be willing to make a motion.
Can we follow up? Well, you sort of have a question in there for the town planner. If we go over, if the town rather goes over budget, will the state still pay eighty percent of what we go over budget?
I would think not. I mean.
That's what I assumed as well.
Yeah, I would think, I don't know if, I don't know the particulars of cost overrun. But there was a question about timing. Can I just address that question about, so we all know where the timing is?
Yes.
Okay. So the grants due September fifteenth. The applicants can do a presentation before our regional planning commission. That will be in October. The state DOT with their committee makes a decision in February. They'll make it before town meeting. So then in town meeting, then we can look at allocating that $50,000 to this grant and that would be a town meeting item, budget item. Then assuming that gets passed, then in October would be when we can expend the fund. So it'd be October 2010. Okay.
One more question. You said that the town had already had the money in the budget.
Correct.
Now, is that specifically for this project or was that for road improvements?
Right. The money that we have right now is in the highway budget for road improvements.
Right, so that could be Highland Street or could be Cummings Hill Road, could be any of them.
Right.
So you'd be stealing from them to put it into this.
Right, so that's why at town meeting, we would authorize it to go to the grant. So the money's set up for sidewalk improvements. There's no street specified, just sidewalk improvements. And then in February, if we get the grant, then we would say, okay, we will put it towards the T E grant.
You could change the bricks on those crosswalks too, right, instead of this project?
Correct.
Mr. Ahern did say he wanted to make a motion, so as long as you don't make a motion before him, I'll be happy to note you.
I just had a comment.
Yes, Mr. Scarborough, please comment.
I would like to offer simply to the board that it's been my history and my, my understanding that in any of these government processes and any of these public projects, you pay for what you get. And you are, if you're going to improve a dirt pathway with concrete, lay a sidewalk, improve a parking lot, extend improvements into the roadway, we're going to pay. We budgeted and if it exceeds, it's going to cost. That is the way of town government. Mr. Kelly?
I understand. Can I make one other remark? Frank Miller said that, that most of this project was done. And I have a list here that, that says Green Street, Depot Street improvements. And they have construction of a two-level parking structure and also construction of a seventy-two space parking lot. I don't think that there's a two-level parking structure down there. So are we going to be unpleasantly surprised one of these days in them coming up with plans for a two-level parking structure down there since this is in the original plan?
I don't have my crystal ball in front of me, but it could be out there, I suppose. Any other? Are you going to speak directly to the, the future, the plans for a future two-story parking deck?
No, I'm not going to touch that with a ten-foot pole.
If you could be very brief.
I was going to just offer that I've been involved in the T E process when I was at North Country Council, the chairman of that council. And I can tell you, in relation to any application, the better the pre-work that's done and barreling out the details of the project and getting the most accurate estimate that you can of the dollars required to do what you want to do is in your best interest. Don't go in there with a wag and then come back later and say, gee, we underestimated. A lot of applications have done that. And when they do, they either fall off the sled or they don't get any consideration whatsoever. And in terms of, if you've got a good, hard estimate and for some reason, some condition occurs that you couldn't see, below ground, so to speak, DOT would negotiate with the town to provide additional monies to cover those kinds of circumstances.
Before I recognize Mr. Ahern for his motion, Ms. Bishop, were you going to say something?
I was just thinking that the town did an engineering C consultants back in 2006. And Mr. Hool had mentioned something that there was an issue with the pole being moved, that it was going to be costly. I didn't know whether that was corrected in that original study. And I wanted to know if that's based on what we're proposing here. Because you're saying it's going to be 250,000. Well, if that's an issue, then that should have been part of the quote, moving that electric pole across from Anderson's, right there at the corner, isn't there? If it can be pulling back that wall.
Right. Okay, again, this is a concept and this is an estimate, so.
How can you get an estimate, just a general, is what I'm?
But to get a more detailed estimate, we'd have to hire an engineer. So, I mean, it's how much are you going to spend to get more details before you have the grant? All the grant requires is that we come up with a concept and an estimate and we took the engineering plans that S E A did and based the estimate on that. So we have a lot more than most communities because we had a full in-depth study that S E A did. With the retaining wall, we can relook at that. It's, it's very easy to take something out. It's harder to add it back in. So if we decide not to do the retaining wall, wow, we have all this extra money, you know? It's really not going to be a big issue. It'd be harder finding something that we didn't expect. But since Mr. Hool said they already looked at it, so we can just take it out.
Did that address your question?
It does. I just want to voice my opinion, just not knowing all the facts, so I'm going to stay neutral with this.
Okay. I'm just going to say as a member of the board, not as the chair, but, I mean, it does strike me that especially as we as a town are trying to be as fiscally conscious as possible in these tough times, that we do seem to have a gift in the sense of possible 200,000 from the state, from the state slash the federal government. And when, when else will we have the opportunity as a town to get 200,000 to do this? I mean, hopefully not at the next economic downturn. And, but I think that's something for the select board to, to consider when they, when they meet on Monday. But I'll say, I'll carry on by saying, I mean, where I'm going to place my vote, just as a member of the board, is based on, does this make sense as a concept? And the select board, I think, has the, has the responsibility to decide whether it's right for the town in terms of a financial decision. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Ahern, do you want to make that motion?
I, I'd make a motion that we recommend to the board as selectmen to not support the T E grant application.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Ahern and seconded by Mr. Kelly. And we can have some discussion on the motion or we can go right into a vote. Obviously, if this motion passes, then we will, the select board will have the indication that we do not support it. If this motion fails, we would still need to make a motion to recommend this project to the board in order for them to get that. Mr. Kelly?
In regards to the 200,000, there's grants coming down the tube all the time. I know Paul, the town administrator, is requesting for grants every day. So this, this reminds me a little bit of the, the used car salesman, that man, if you don't buy that car within, within today, that will never be able to buy another car like that in their life. If you've only got 50 cents in your pocket and, and you're going to spend 20 cents out on, and somebody's taking away 30 cents and you only got 20 cents left, how good is it that no matter what they're going to give you, it's still going to cost the town X number of money? It's like a sale. You know, if you don't need it in essence, no sale is a sale. And so I hate to have this pressure put on that, you know, it just has to be done by a certain date. It's a real, it's a real pressure point and I don't think that, that should be the way that the municipality should work.
Mr. Scarborough?
Yes, I'd like to correct Mr. Kelly, it's 250,000. Not 200.
Mr. Randlet, you had a question?
Yes, I just wanted to make the comment, I mean, I think this has been brought up. The funds are available. The town has the opportunity. I don't think anybody's saying we have to do it now. I think they're saying that the funds are going to be made available for this type of project. I think as Bill Hool said, we, the town's been looking at it since 2004. Most of the abutters have agreed to all of this and, so I think we need to look at it that way. I don't think anybody's saying if we don't do it now, it's not going to get done. But the funds will be available in September and I think we need to look at it from that standpoint.
Hearing no further conversation, I'll call for a vote. If you vote aye on this question, that means that we as a board will recommend to the select board that we do not think that this project has the merit to move forward. And if you vote nay, that means that we can still discuss whether we want to recommend the project or not. So the motion is to recommend to the, to the select board that we do not support this. All in favor, would you please raise your hand? Two in favor of that motion, all against that motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So that, that motion fails. If anybody would like to make a counter motion or some other motion, Mr. Randlet?
Mr. Chairman, I, I make the motion that we recommend this to the select board for their consideration. I think it's a very worthwhile project. The funds are there and, you know, allow the select board to, I think from the public input that we've had tonight, I think the public is in favor of it and the businesses. So I think we need to look at that.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Mr. Wilson has seconded it. Is there a discussion of this motion? Again, if you, we as a board are simply making a recommendation about a project plan and proposal and it's up to the select board whether they, whether to fund it and move forward with it because that's, they make the financial decisions. So hearing no other further discussion, all in favor of the motion to recommend, for the planning board to recommend this project to the select board, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Those against this motion, two, and that motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you, everyone in the audience. Our next agenda item is a minor lot line adjustment. We'll have a discussion and a public hearing.
Mr. Scott?
The planner would like to introduce the project to us and then we can have the applicants make a brief statement.
This is for a proposal from Roy Saborn, a surveyor on behalf of William Hazel and Stephen Carpenter.
Are these both the same?
Yeah, they're both the same and I put those out there so you can take a look at a bigger scale.
If I could have the board's attention, we have, Mr. Kelly? We have some revised plans that will be better for us to look at.
Oh, okay. All right, what we have, okay, Mr. Saborn?
Why don't we have the town planner explain to, to the board everything and then we'll let you lay that out and give us a brief summary? Thank you.
What we have is just a boundary line adjustment, so we're not creating any new lots, we're just taking from one lot and adding to another lot. And this is, Roy Saborn's the surveyor and he's working on behalf of William Hazel and Stephen Carpenter for a boundary line adjustment. And they're going to, one lot is ninety-nine acre, I mean, .99 acres, it's not even one acre. And the boundary line adjustment would increase that lot to 14.62 acres. It would decrease the parent parcel from 113 acres to 99.4 acres. This is located off of Fairgrounds Road and its own agricultural. Right now, the lot with it being .99 acres, technically, it's not conforming because our lot requirement is one acre, so it's a little bit short of that. Not that we would, you know, arrest anyone, but according to the zoning ordinance, it's short the one acre. So in addition, there's an existing garage and the garage is actually a little bit over the property line, so that's also non-conforming. With the proposed addition to his lot of the 13.63 acres, that would put his garage and his, and his lot in compliance with our ordinance. The parent parcel would have 99 acres, so of course, that's still in compliance. It wouldn't take it out of compliance. So from the staff perspective, this is a good proposal. The surveyor is requesting five waivers from the plat submission and it's due to, that the parent parcel has 99 acres after the adjustment. So one of the requirements was to survey the whole lot, but it just didn't seem necessary since it's such a large size. The other one is there's no anticipated change in use, either the adjusted parcel or the remainder parcel. So that was another reason why he requested some of those waivers because usually you're looking at someone building something. And three, there's no boundary or topographic plan that exists of the said parcel, so that made it difficult to meet some of the requirements. I've visited the site, I've reviewed the application, I've determined that that application is complete. And the waivers all appear reasonable for those reasons I stated before. So the planner recommends the planning board accept the application as complete and grant the five requested waivers. I'm also recommending approval with the following staff conditions. There's three conditions. One, the accessory dwelling units, which is a garage, there's a horse barn and there's a pole barn that are existing, that they shall not be used as dwelling units because we only permit one dwelling unit per parcel. And I've already talked to the property owner and he has no intent of doing that. Horse barn is an active horse barn and the pole barn, you know, all of them are used the way that they're intended to be used. And he has no intention of converting them into dwelling units. Two, approval of the boundary line adjustment does not imply approval for any change in use or construction of additional structures. Should the applicant want a change of use or build a structure in the future, the applicant shall contact the appropriate authorities. So basically, this means that we're just approving a lot line adjustment. We're not approving any new structures being put out there. And three, the final plat submitter shall be stamped and signed by the licensed surveyor and that's very standard.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Saborn?
Yeah.
Mr. Saborn, why don't you introduce yourself and give us the Mr. Saborn, why don't you introduce yourself and give us the updated plans?
As Marion pointed out, I am Roy Saborn, a place as I say, I'm in Oakwood, and this business went quite a little while. I've been a part of this for a hundred times.
Just speak up a little bit, please.
Sir?
Are we getting that?
I'm close, but I'm out of here.
The only difference that I wanted to share with you folks tonight, there is no change in the size or shape of the lot from the plans you had. The only difference is that we decided to add dimensions onto the plan for the existing .99 acre lot that Steve Carpenter holds, just for the ease of the person writing the deed to describe this in any fashion that decided to be the most appropriate. And there was one other thing we actually showed on your original plans we submitted, we had not set the corner pins at that time, so those showed as corners to be set, they're all there now, and that is reflected in the plat. Those were the two changes between the plats that you've seen already and the one that I'm bringing in tonight to your signatures. Marion summed it up. We don't anticipate any change in use. This is strictly to enlarge a property that a gift basically from father to father, mother to son, so that Steve's lot will get larger, and that's really all this is about.
Thank you. So in terms of the procedure, what we need to do as a board is first decide whether we feel this application is complete, and that's a question of some note, because there's the five exceptions that have been requested to be waived. And then if we deem it to be complete, we'll have a public hearing, and then we can act as to whether we approve the proposal or not. So does anybody wish to make a proposal that this application is deemed complete with the five waivers?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kelly, is there a second by Ms. Bishop? Did I see you seconding that? Is there any further discussion about accepting this as a, as a complete application? This is not approving it, just as a complete application with the five waivers? All in favor of accepting this as complete with the five waivers? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, it's a complete application. So now we can, if we would like to ask the applicant any clarifying questions, we can do so, and after that, we'll have a public hearing. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Saborn? Seeing none, it is 7:41, and I'll open the public hearing on this. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak of any nature to this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:42, and come back to the board. Is there any further questions that need to be clarified or a motion to be made? Mr. Ahern?
I want to clarify the staff conditions. If it's already, number one and number two, if they're already not allowed because of our zoning, do we have to really put one and two as conditions?
Yeah, I mean, the point was just to clarify, just so there won't be any misunderstanding later on. It's up to the board if you don't want to put it in, I just like to be as clear as possible.
I'd just be concerned if we approved this, and then, it's a 13 acre piece at that point, and then, say they do want to take a garage and make a separate dwelling unit, if it is allowed, this might say, because they got their approval, that they could never do it. So if it's already not allowed by zoning, then I think we're covered.
Well, as I said, I, I just wanted to bring it to their attention, so it won't be a matter of, all of a sudden, something gets converted, oh, I never knew, I wasn't supposed to.
Well, you'd have to get a building permit.
He would have to know to come and get a permit. So sometimes people do stuff without contacting Town Hall, because they didn't know. So it's just a clarification matter, so they, they don't get.
Would, would Mr. Ahern, would your concern be addressed if there was just a little bit more language in here, that the accessory dwelling units shall not be used as dwelling units unless the plan came before the planning board again?
Yeah, I would, yeah, well.
But the way a site plan would normally come before?
Yeah, that any further improvements, you know, a site plan would be necessary, or a building permit.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I did put in there, should the applicant, I said, should the applicant want a change of use or build a structure in the future, the applicant shall contact the appropriate authorities at Plymouth Town Hall. So I have that in number two.
Well, then maybe we can combine one and two into one long paragraph.
Sure.
Mr. Ahern, then that would be there, would that be better? Okay.
Can just strike line one, could we not? Is it not covered in two?
I think the point was to be very clear that there's only one dwelling unit per parcel. Anybody can do anything they want until a motion's been made?
Well, it would seem to accommodate Mr. Ahern better with line one gone, and I understand his point, that I would hate to see somebody in the future come back and say that a condition of the approval was that a law that may no longer exist was on the books at the time. I kinda like the generality of obey the law, which is what line two is.
So you're saying keep the second sentence of point one?
Yes, and strike the first, in which case we've gone a little more general and.
Okay.
And combining number two into number one after that sentence.
Okay, so number two would be number one, and we just omit number one? That's fine, that's.
Number one is really included in number two.
Right.
Right, 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 that's, that's absolutely fine. That makes a lot of sense. And actually, I see that these plans are already signed and stamped, so we could eliminate number three. The originals weren't signed and stamped, so that's why I added that, but these are, so we can eliminate number three.
Mr. Ahern?
I'd be willing to make a motion, then.
Please do.
I make a motion that we approve the lot line adjustment with a condition stating number two on our list, which would then become the only condition.
Is there a second for that motion? Mr. Randlet seconds that? Is there any further discussion? The motion is to approve this plan with the condition that is printed on our notes from the planner as number two, that would, of course, become number one and the only one. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving this as stated? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mr. Randlet did.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe, Marion, that I owe you L chip fee, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any other fee outstanding other than that? Or do you mind, I think we're actually, we're going to wait until I have to.
Right, so we'll just do the recording in L chip, you know, together, one check, and.
But I don't think I'd give you either of those, would you please?
Correct.
If you give me that amount, and I could leave a check with you this evening?
Oh, okay.
I brought it with me, if, if we're done, if that's acceptable.
Okay, so you don't know off the top of your head, I'm guessing 25 and 26.
But the registry charges, unless you have an additional fee for postage or packaging or whatever?
No.
That would be $51 as a standard fee.
Yep, it's 51, and then we already did the postage with your submittal fee.
Okay, so if I made you have to check for that, then we're all set. And perhaps the extra copies, there are some extra copies beyond what you require, correct? My client could spin by and pick those up after you have a chance to sign. They would then, what, the next few days?
Correct, are you?
Yep.
Town, okay.
Excellent, thank you, I'll make up the check.
Yeah, to Town of, no, to the, Grafton County Register.
Thank you very much, and please, just add those old, two old plans, that don't get mixed in with the rules.
Okay, so as we transition to our next item.
Well, I have one question about that condition you put in there, that does not prohibit me from applying for a building from any, I want to put another barn or another structure on that.
That's correct. You're not prohibited from applying, that's right.
Be good.
Right, it's just a reminder, because, you know, you have a lot of land.
You want me to go stick another building up without?
Right, without coming to Town Hall, that's, it's just a reminder.
All right, our next item on the agenda is another minor lot adjustment, excuse me, another minor lot line adjustment. This will be a discussion and public hearing on a proposal from Tom Hahn, Foreco, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, LLC, on behalf of Scott Piper Trust and John D. Francis for a minor lot line adjustments. So as you gathered, the routine is that the town planner will introduce the item and her report, and then we'll ask you to introduce yourselves and the project briefly, we'll have a, a motion to, if your project is deemed to be complete, and then we'll have a public hearing and see what, if the planning board knows we're approving it. Town Planner?
Okay, Bert's got the copy, the big size, so, okay. But Tom Hahn, is that right? Okay, is the surveyor, and he's, and he presented this application on behalf of Scott Piper and John Francis for a boundary line, minor lot line adjustment, so it's similar to our other one. And Mr. Francis's lot would increase from 1.1 acres to 1.74, and the decrease in the parent parcel would be from 41 acres to 40.36. What it is, is the majority of Mr. Piper's property is on the west side of Thompson Farm Lane. A small piece of his property is located on the east side of Thompson Farm Lane, that's .64 acres. So that small piece of the property is on the same side as Mr. Francis's property. So Mr. Francis was interested in obtaining that property that's abutting his property. Mr. Piper is willing to sell that to him, because he's got the majority of his property on the other side. The planner sent this request to the technical review committee for their comments and concerns. We didn't receive any comments or concerns. I went out to the side, I've reviewed the application, I've determined the application is complete. I recommend the planning board accept the application as complete. And also, I recommend approval with the following note, just approval of the boundary line adjustment does not imply approval of any change in use. So it's the same standard statement, just, again, with getting more land, sometimes I feel that people might feel that they need to put a building on there, and I just am reminding them to come into Town Hall before they put a new building on there, because all we're approving is the boundary line adjustment.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to step up and introduce themselves?
I'm Tom Hahn with Foreco, Rummy, and with me tonight is Mr. Piper and Mr. Francis. And it's a fairly simple lot line adjustment, Marion explained it well. The, I don't know if you need any, a couple of the larger plans, if the smaller plans are a little too small to, to look at. And I also made a copy of the combined, Mr. Piper's property straddles the Plymouth and Rummy Town Line, so he has, actually has additional acreage in Rummy as well. But if you wanted to, just to see kinda where the lot line adjustment is, just a little green spot there, Mr. Francis's property is the pink, and he has fronted Sean Moonlake itself. So this is just a little addition onto the south end of his existing property. And Thompson Farm Lane becomes the dividing point, the new dividing point between the two owners.
All right, thank you very much. So I would look for a motion from the board if they feel that this application is complete or not complete. Mr. Ahern?
To accept the application's complete.
Been moved by Mr. Ahern and seconded by Ms. Bishop, that this application is complete. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor of seeing this application as complete? Please say aye.
Aye.
Against? It's unanimous that it's complete. At this time, I will ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to say anything. I'll open up the public meeting at 7:52. Speak now, or forever hold your peace. And at 7:52 and a half, I'll close the public hearing and come back to the board. Do you have any further questions of the applicant or a motion to approve this or to not? Ms. Bishop?
I make a motion that we approve the application as stated, written.
With the added little language that the planner had in there, or without it?
With it's fine with me.
Okay, is there a second of that motion? Mr. Wilson seconded that? Is there any further discussion? Everyone in favor of approving this minor lot line change? Say aye.
Aye.
Say nay? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will bring in a signed minor for you.
Okay.
I'm waiting, been waiting for the co-op to determine whether there is an easement, a written easement for the power line that crosses the lot line adjustment area. So I hope to hear back from them fairly soon.
The question I had was on the size, is that accepted by Grafton County?
Pardon me?
The size of your plat, is that accepted? Okay, I just trusted you knew, so.
Yeah, no, it's a, they accept all the standard sizes, from eight and a half, 11, up to 25, 34.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item, unfinished and other business, does anybody have any other business that they'd like to bring forth to this table? Moving on then to item number eight, public comments. Anybody in the audience like to make a public comments?
Yes, I do. I'm about to kind of over some of this. I was on the planning board in 83, when we, the town initiated the master plan for the town. Since then, we've had the Green Street Plan, which is 1994, '95, and the cultural arts plan of 2001. But as far as some of these items that people get confused and have a conflict with, this wall of the bachelor block, and by Mr. Hall, the power line is there, and Mr. Bill Hull mentioned it was expensive. This project for relocating the power line on Main Street is much the same as any project that we did for the drainage on Main Street, and we moved, either buried the lines or moved the service entrance to the backside of the building, that was part of that whole contract. When we do the master planning, this Green Street Master Plan and all these big plans, they're concepts, and they take in all of our wish lists. And when you go out to a specific contract to do as part of it, then you have to specify through design certain functions, functions of what you'd like to get done. Obviously, there's gonna be overlaps and areas where you would like to do, but it's not economically viable to do it part of this particular contract. Kelly, your concern about the size of the drainage pipe, culverts and so on, they would match the existing culvert size that's there. So this culvert that is in the middle of the street, if it's an 18 inch, the offset culvert insert would have an 18 inch connector. It's 20, 24, whatever it is. Obviously, they would calculate the flow rate out based on the average and also the velocity, which is part of the redesign next to Rance, is to get the, change the shape and flow rates, so you can control the velocity, which is part of erosion problem. As far as what this vision for the rest of Green Street, we've had several charades of public hearings as to what they would like to see and what we'd like to do with Green Street, the ultimate use for the public. We have looked at various parking arrangements, various uses of the land, and obviously, the infrastructure requirements, not only the water and sewer district upgrade, but also the big one is the cross at the south end, so we can connect Green Street to Route 3. A lot of these projects, a long lead time, and just like the bridge, but on the, which, the hole in this bridge got replaced, it was put on the list back in the 79, 80 area, and it's taken us 25 years to get it there. So, these are all concept proposals, and, and the actual cost of this contract would not be, we're going in with the, the estimate of what is proposed here. be, we're going in with the estimate of what is proposed here by the design by an engineer, but they would actually price it out by what is going to be actually built. And a lot of this that you see here may not be built, because there's some issues and conflicts that need to be addressed on site, and I do believe that most selectmen sign contracts for construction, there's a clause in there of not to exceed a certain amount. You just can't go in and freelance a job and say, well, you owe us an extra $1,000. That's just not the good business. But as far as what we had anticipated and listed in our 1995 Green Street Report, we have done six projects. A lot of them have been, obviously, the state, federal government with the bridge, a lot of our state and town, that's the parking and realignment of the Green Street intersection, the town, paint, and we did a park this area all by itself on the north side. Fish and Game, state did this public boat, the amphitheater is the grocery club. The rest of this, if we have our master plans, and these Green Street plans, and we get the public input, this is the type of thing that we would like to allow for economic redevelopment, okay? And nobody wants to invest private personal monies if they sense the people not really sure what they want, or they don't want this to happen. But we need to start to think about how we're going to plan for economic redevelopment of the town and South Main Street. And this Main Street, Route 3 here, this concrete is in the 10-year plan, and you're right, it's moved back because of the state's budget systems, it's now the 15- or 20-year plan. The whole key is, right now, as a town, we have no strategic planning as to what we would like to see happen here of Main Street from Bachelor, I mean for the box block, all the way down to Parker Street, which is, they're going to totally reconstruct. And I would have to tell you, as a citizen, I would be very disappointed if the state came in and said, oh, we have the monies to do this, and we, the town, had no pre-planning elements in writing as to what we would like to see improved and changed, and they come in and just redo it and leave what we have. We'd have to suffer with it for another 50 or 100 years. So this, this interface and this projects we're talking about, these power lines, these were all going to be, were recommended to be moved to the back or buried, and obviously, that's a very expensive event, and that needs to be part of an economic development. And this is where we need to get the planning done, concepts, not specifics, try to solve the technical issues of engineering, but let's get the plans in and see if in fact we can get some of this done without having to raise appropriate monies. So this, also this railroad crossing is, was agreed to by the state, by the town, with the town selectmen for the building of the courthouse. The state said that they recognized that they had an obligation to improve that, in other words, you have to go in and put special ties in, make it load-bearing, and widen up for vehicles and pedestrians, and they were going to pay for that. Their funding for the courthouse ran short, because if you look at the sidewalk, the sidewalk didn't even get to the end of their property, which brings up another point. Part of the process of the planning board on site plan reviews and/or subdivision is, any off-site improvements that a developer should be obligated to is to ensure that the environmental issues such as drainage and access points, such as sidewalks or roads, gets completed past their property line. Because what you have here, if you look at Green Street, you have all of these separate projects, and until we got that sidewalk and Green Street rebuilt, that they all get connected. Right now, you just, this, you know, the courthouse stops here, this one stops here, this one stops here, they're, everybody's legal because of what we just did to our boundary line. Well, this was the purpose of having off-site improvement requirements by the planning board, is to make sure that the drainage and any sidewalking gets totally connected. So this has been in the works now in the master plan since 84, and it's subsequently gone through all these different meetings, got in a formalized plan in Green Street in 95, so, and the thing is, is the, the use of the people in the town of Plymouth, these two intersections are probably the two key intersection of the whole town, and obviously, that's where we need to really, you know, if we need to spend those monies, I think that's where we get a return on investment.
Can I?
Thank you very much.
Something that Mr. Kelly had brought up about this 10-year plan here, did you not say that in that plan you had something written where there was a two-story parking lot?
Well, that was in-
You made a statement about that.
That had nothing to do with the state. I think that was the wish list of-
Is that no longer?
Of their committee, yeah.
We've had several. We have a plan on Green Street, and we have what's called the ABC plan. We had looked at, obviously, the biggest was to make use of this riverfront park, okay, this land right in here. And then, what to do with this area here, where we needed parking space, we needed a public building here so we could have restrooms, okay? So you, right now, you have a potential here for 300 or 400 people. I can't remember what the demand and capacity level of the senior center, but if we build this up, you might end up with a 800 to 1,000 people here. And if you're going to have a party, you need to bring and pre-plan some of the infrastructure, such as restrooms, to balance it out, because obviously, it was going to be heading to the senior center, and that's really not what it was designed for, to exceed that limit. So this is all part of getting the concept down, and then you start looking at the technology, and you have engineers, architects, land surveyors, natural scientists, town planners, and regional planners, and that's a technology in itself to look and see how you can make it work. Obviously, if we have limits of, there's a set limit of space here, and by codes and standards, we can only allow so many people in this area, and then it becomes a public safety issue with fire, police, EMS. So obviously, that's part of the concepting and planning.
So where was the parking lot going to be?
Well, the parking lot would be in this area, okay?
Where the parking is right now, but you just made it a second story.
Well, there was, we were talking, we had suggested a two-level. The reason we were talking two-level was if we build a building here, and it would have public restrooms on the first floor, so it would be 88, we would like to have upstairs an office space, which would be, this would basically supervised and run-maintained by Parks and Recs, to have a upper-floor supervisory level where you can view this area here for supervision. It's obviously a lot easier to supervise one story up. But that's, it was only a concept, there's no obligation, and there's an ABC plan, and this, up to here, what you see is, this is, all has been completed. We now have to start the whole process, you have to go through the planning process for this site plan, and so, you know, so you do your, you do your inventory, you have to do the man capacity, you have to do the environmental assessments to determine what your environmental impacts are, then you do your financial management plan, and then you pick your plan, your final plan as a result of that.
So if this sidewalk goes through, you've got some more dreaming to do?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Kelly?
A couple of things. Is I, I understand that Green Street ends where, at the senior center, or just below that?
No, that's the $24 question. I, I've heard that this Green Street turns, when it gets to the senior center, goes up here as Green Street, and this is called South Street. But then, I've heard this called Highland Street Extension, and this street all the way down to Water and Sewer is Green Street.
Right. But at the end of Water and Sewer, that is not owned by the town?
At the end of Water and Sewer, on the east side of the railroad track is all Water and Sewer. On the west side of this Harris Brothers Furniture and Alex Ray.
Right. So it wouldn't go to, would it go to Route 3, not going through those two units land?
It would have to, we would have to buy the loading dock area, which is owned by Harris Brothers Furniture, because if you cross the railroad tracks there, you make a square intersection.
Yeah, yeah. The second thing is, you said that this intersection was probably the most important intersection there is in the town of Plymouth, or the most, something I can't quite get at.
Well, I'm saying, as far as an intersection point, this is viewed as our second Main Street, and so people, in trying to get around the congestion here during midday, obviously try to bypass this and use Green Street both ways.
I was just, I was just thinking that we've heard, for safety sakes, that Highland Street and Langdon Street is one of the most dangerous intersections, and we also, I understand that Cummings Hill Road intersection was one of the most dangerous intersections, and I wondered why this, why this came up bubbling up to the top.
Well, now, see, you said the correct word, dangerous, okay? Parker Street and Cummings Hill Road, the states already written a town, but those are dangerous roads, and we have an issue with those. Same thing with Langdon and Highland Street as a dangerous road, conflicts as far as pedestrians and vehicles. This is just a high-use area. If we have major events, and I'll give you an example, when the senior center reopened after its refurbishment, we had a transportation expo, which we thought maybe a couple hundred people show up. Little did we know that they'd bust them in from Montreal. The same time, on that same day, the Silver Hall of the university had a major three-state ban system come in, so there was buses and people. The same time, the theater, and these are three separate entities that totally uncontrolled did not concur with each other and say, hey, you're going to have a big thing here on this weekend, they had a blockbuster movie. You couldn't get a 10-feet bike in this town. We have an obligation as a planning committee to look at the total capacity of Main Street, and then there's a finite capacity of which this town's full, and you no longer can safely attract people to come to town without impacting the town's cost of fire, police, and EMS. So that's why we have to start pre-planning some of these events.
And now, my other question is that you've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and some money in doing all this, and, and I would assume that your committee would be for the whole town. I haven't ever seen any plans for anything out on Tenny Mountain Highway. The amphitheater could have been out there, a lot, a lot of these things could have been out there, and there's a lot of land out there, then it wouldn't be in a congested area. Right now, you're making a blibbit, and I won't tell you what that is, but it's, it's trying to put a quart and a half of blueberries in a quart jack, and that's exactly what's happening there, and that's what's making it a high-use, a dangerous place. So, you know, I realize that you want this all developed down there, but there is other land in Plymouth, and people can get to those other places in Plymouth, because most of the time, people go to these places by car. You know, there's, there's some people that walk, but very, very few, and I haven't ever seen where your committee has ever done anything but tried to stop progress out on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Mr. Miller, I think, I think Mr. Kelly's made his point. Are there other questions that you have, Mr. Miller, Mr. Kelly?
Just two things. Is most of this stuff in the flood zone?
Yes.
It's in the environmentally sensitive zone, which is represented by the stash line.
Flood zone is subject to verifying and validating, which the state is going to be doing when they get the funds to reevaluate the flood zone for the pay.
Okay. And the last question is, have we gained anything in our tax basis for any of this stuff down here? Where Tenny Mountain Highway has gained a tremendous amount in tax basis, and if it wasn't fought so hard against, there would have been a lot more tax bases out there, and nothing has been done out there, where this has no, as far as I know, no increase in the tax basis for any of this stuff.
Well-
Just a second, Mr. Miller. Mr. Kelly, we didn't really invite Mr. Miller up for this sort of interrogation, so.
I could give a very good answer.
If it could be brief, please.
As far as any efforts for redesigning and our economic redevelopment out on Tenny Mountain Highway, I was the airport manager, and that's what I do, I design airports. We have a diamond in the rough out there, 125 acres, that should be generating a whole lot of more money than what it's doing right now. Obviously, you have to do the, what they call a feasibility study, that's required by the FAA, where you do all of your analytical study, and you have to design the types of businesses that use that environment, okay? Whether it's out at the airport on Quincy Drive Road or Tenny Mountain Highway. There are those types of industries by zoning and by town, people saying, we would like to have those types of businesses out there. In town, where you have a compact, where you are elbow-to-elbow, brick-to-brick, obviously, there are certain types of businesses that we'd like to attract that on the large, they attract, use around 5,000 square feet or less, and you want a high dollar value per square foot rate of return of the types of businesses you attract. Now, part of the attraction for a business looking to come to town is the quality of access, obviously, the streets and roads. Then it's going to be parking lots so they can get out of there.
Mr. Miller, I think the question was really asking you and this sort of committee about its worldview and its philosophy, as opposed to the details as to why you would look at one area or another area.
Yeah.
And I would be happy to defer your answer to another time if you wanted your committee to perhaps address these questions.
We can, we can do that. But right now, if you're interested in attracting businesses to come to get a rate of return of taxes for this property here that's undeveloped, the first, one thing that people need to look at is, can I get to this property? Do I have the services and infrastructures like sidewalks and parking areas that allow my business to happen? And so it is, and the other issue we have here, which is very frustrating, that you don't have so much out in Tenny Mountain because you have 100-acre lots, is we have, a lot of this is owned by public, the municipal, the town, the state, and then private businesses. And so when you start looking at the authority to act level, so how do you interface the obligations and responsibility of the selectmen dealing with public properties, and then what the private landowner has in their authorities to deal with the- the private landowner has their authorities to deal with the property? That's part of our problem we're having, is getting people together to solve some of our issues downtown when you're working with two different authorities to act.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Miller. I think we sort of slid back on the agenda up to the unfinished business and other business section, with some of the questions that went back and forth, but thank you, Mr. Miller, for your public comment. To our last item on the agenda, which is--
A motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ahern says it sees the day again. Thank you very much.